Thank you for the blessing that you've bestowed on this city and on this country and on us individually. We ask that you extend that blessing to this council, that we make decisions based on what's good for the city and our citizens' rights and in yours. We ask your blessings on our forces, wherever they may be, and on their families. We ask it all in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Mike, would you lead us? I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll be opening a public hearing regarding the ad valorem tax rate for the city of Waynesville. John, would you give us a brief history on that?
So, the ad valorem tax rate within the city actually decreased, I think, a little this year. This is a, we do this annually, it's reviewed annually, and this typically get it in July, and we approve it in the August meeting, so this is a pretty standard procedure.
Do we have any public comments regarding ad valorem tax? Any council comments?
It's going lower.
Yeah, it's going lower.
All right, we'll close the public hearing on this. Consent agenda, have a motion for consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Curtis?
I'll second.
Amanda, second. Do we need a roll call or?
Show hands is fine.
Show a hand is fine.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Okay, special guest presentation. Well, Swinses Auto Service. Thank you. Swinses Auto Service is a business spotlight for this month. I'll read the certificate. They couldn't make it tonight, they're busy charging here. No. Would you show up? I talked to Billy, he said you weren't coming. Will you come on down there?
He fixed my AC last week.
I thought he was still fixing air conditioning.
It's $69.95.
Let's go up to center here so everybody can see us. Certificate of excellence. You already knew that, didn't you? Presented to Swinses Auto Service on behalf of the city of Waynesville, we are honored to acknowledge your outstanding service to Waynesville and the surrounding community. Because of your dedication and quality in customer service, your business has been recognized as Business Spotlight for August 21st.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you.
Cost of labor price.
We have another proclamation that I'll read here, but this will be in honor of water and wastewater treatment professional week. Whereas water is one of the most valuable economic, environmental, and recreational resources, safe drinking water sustains the life, health, and safety of our citizens. Abundant water supply attracts industry, investment, and creates jobs. And whereas proper transportation, treatment of wastewater contributes to the healthy community and improves water quality for streams, rivers, and lakes. Clean and safe water are necessary to fulfill the motto of the state, salus populus supremus ex esto. The welfare of the people shall be the supreme law. And whereas water and wastewater treatment professionals maintain and operate the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to sustainable and resilient community, public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the citizens of Waynesville. Whereas water, wastewater professionals are recognized as essential personnel during COVID-19 response for their effort to protect Waynesville citizens and critical infrastructure. And whereas water, wastewater treatment professional week is a unique opportunity for water and wastewater professionals and the community they serve to join together to recognize a vital role and wastewater professionals play in our daily lives. That was a mouthful. Okay, board commissioners liaison reports. Park Board.
Park Board, did meet August 12th, opened the meeting up at 2:58 PM. We had a lot to discuss this time, but we'll leave some highlights of it. On the Glasgow County Master Gardener report, there's change of personnel, or the Marvin Yoder is the current chapter president now for Master Gardens. He'll be coming to give reports to us if we are contacted. Also, we have a new leader in the WSR program. His name is Steve Bayles. And Aaron, last day was July 16th, so we're glad to have him on board. They're also selling Springfield Cardinals tickets as a fundraiser. If I'm interested, we can see them about that.
That's been discontinued. There wasn't enough interest on that, so let's, let the program discontinue.
Oh, they canceled? Okay. It was still pushing though last week.
Jack, excuse me, I didn't see you there. I hadn't had you come down, I'd read it to you in person. You hiding from me?
Mike, he just came in, man.
He came in.
Oh, did?
Oh, I just got here.
Okay, well, you can leave then. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Also, baseball season is ended and it's time for soccer. We're gonna have our next meeting in September. We're gonna have it at the Arby Park. Have a potluck dinner there. Everybody's invited to come, just bring something in. At the Rubidu Park, Ronnie Wilson is taking that over now. It tells us slash pad will be replaced, oh, tell me when we replace coming year shuts down for the season. Ronnie would like to label trees along the trail in the park. She'd like to have a use of pathway, and it could be used for people just wanting to hike, it could be used for schoolchildren, could be used for all kinds of activities there. And she has been a nature guide at the state parks before, so she has a lot of experience in that area. A question was brought up, could the park board start creating work orders at the meetings to be submitted to the utilities department? They can be emailed for tracking purposes, so that we can track how long it takes for an issue to be corrected. Councilman Curtis suggested that this would be a fabulous idea that would help us break the heat and track. We've decided about that idea. Also, Mr. Curtis mentioned how popular our parks are with people out of town, coming just to see our parks. So, that's kind of encouraging statement, in that we may have, maybe make some changes like food trucks and things like that, so that would all go well. What do I have? Do you have any questions to me?
Any questions? No, I don't want for John. Don't those work orders usually go to you?
Most work orders are run through City Hall, okay? So, we can track them, all departments. And we actually track the time we get the call for the work order, and the point at which they are returned as completed. And we track that as well, as far as turnaround time and things like that, so.
So, it shouldn't be from them to?
Utility, it would actually come through the front office, so if there's a work order. And I, what he, I think what he was trying to tell you guys was the utility improvements that they typically would need. So, one deal before, Jeff came seeing me and was like, hey, we need a water source at, I don't even remember which.
Glen Haven.
Is that where it was? It was at Glen Haven. So, we went, I just went with Jack, we run down there, we found a water source for Glen Haven for cleaning, they wanted to, you know, spray it off, different things like that, and that water source was provided. But a lot of the times, they will just, the way to really do that is to take that request through City Hall, through the front desk, generate a work order, and then they distribute it to the utility that it goes to, whether it be, you know, Jack or Daniel, if it's an electric need, or whatever it may be. And then those work orders are actually completed and brought back, and then that's how we track those.
Which would be the utility supervisor which is tracing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, wait, what? Did you have some? I'm sorry.
I had a question for you on this, I think it was called a trimmed grant? The trees that we put grant in for and have been accepted? Do you know anything about that? It was just on Facebook today.
I'm familiar with that, some Randy.
Okay. The trees that they noted in the report on Facebook were like willow oak, red bud. Now, all these trees, are they native Missouri trees?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there was only a selection of three trees. It was red bud, willow oak, and I think wild.
Wild.
I think that was the third one. So, there was a selection of three trees. We had, I guess, a variety of three. We had requested 10 of each variety. And if you've been to the parks, the trees down there were greatly damaged by an ash board.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so it killed several, several trees in the park. And anyway, a kind of a requirement to get this grant was, you know, they asked, was your parks damaged by this particular disease or board? And it was, so that was actually a good thing. We received the grant, we actually have planned, those trees should be planted this year. I think we are going early September to get the trees. And we wanna, we're trying to schedule to where we pick the trees up on a Monday and have them planted no later than that Friday. And it's gonna be kind of a multi-department task, as we have the need for augers and different things like that.
Right.
You know, so it was a good grant, it was, you know, a great accomplishment by the city, and it will replace some of the trees that we have had to take down in the city park due to.
Yeah, because the ash board came through under my watch.
Right.
And it wiped out every ash tree we had.
Right.
And we lost sycamores here a couple of years ago, so when I saw this, I was just amazed.
Right.
We need.
Right.
And the amounts, like I said, three different types of trees, but 10 of each. That's gonna go a long way.
That's gonna go a long way. We removed 36 stumps from our park.
Right.
So, we're 36 trees down, but this should bring us back to 30, you know, 30 more. So, we're going the right direction.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Let's move on to planning and zoning. Councilman Davis.
All right. I'll sum this up. Last night, there was two public hearings of the Planning and Zoning Committee. We barely had a quorum, so I ended up chairing it. We approved the minutes from the last meeting on July 13th with one amendment that said I was here, but I wasn't here, I was recovering from my good old-fashioned heart attack. So, we amended that. We opened up the public hearing, the first public hearing on the summit subdivision located west of the intersection of Pinnacle. There was 10 citizens' comments. Most of the citizens' comments, their concerns were traffic coming to the summit, the one-way in, one-way out, bus stop location, infrastructure issues, was it capable of holding new sections of that subdivision? We went over with them that it was part of the original master plan here.
Pardon.
And talked about infrastructure backups and everything that are already up in the summit.
Okay.
The bus stops, I noted that the city can't control bus stops, that we would have to go see the school board to get the bus stop changed. Traffic, when the developer got up for the Pinnacle section, he explained that he planned on not bringing dump trucks up into the summit, that he was gonna make an access road while he was building the other development section. They talked about some green space, he assured that green space was still gonna be there, he wasn't gonna go tear down all the trees. So, most of that was settled and talked about. A few things that they, I don't think that there was answers for last night, was the bus stops, and how much more traffic that, for this section, I believe it's 17 or 20 more houses. What we can do about the Summit-Sweetburg entrance? I said before, we had done a traffic study, the only way to stop that is a three-way stop. And, you know, are the roads gonna be tore up? That's more of a roads and grounds issue, so we couldn't really answer it last time. I think that still needs to be answered. Bus stops, again, the school board. And green space was talked about, the contractor, as well as the road going in and going out. That was the first. We closed that when we opened it up on the second section of La Vista and Mesa. Some of the same comments was brought up on that, because that's actually more houses than the first section of the subdivision. We talked about quite a bit of the same issues, and they wanted to know infrastructure in and out of that side also, if there was the ability to make another road in there. It was talked about that the land behind where that's going in, there may not be any road access outside of the main road that goes in to Summit Pass, because most of that land is Bollinger land, their old Nichols property, I don't know who owns that anymore. We closed that public hearing, and they did reference the rezoning to go to the full council. Since then, the municipal code has been looked at, and I don't think that it's going before the council anymore, because the developer wasn't here, correct?
Right.
Last night, there was a lot of people here. We passed it through the council, the ordinance, or passed it through the Planning and Zoning Committee. The ordinance that's written doesn't say that you stop it at the public hearing because the developer's not there. It says that the city administrator doesn't allow it. So, when I talked to John today, he agrees that there should be another public hearing where the developer is at. So, that will be announced at a later date.
September.
September.
The September Planning and Zoning.
September Planning and Zoning meeting will be another public hearing. They'll send out all the letters and all that stuff like they did before.
Yep, that's correct.
Outside of that, there was no other business, and we adjourned at 7:05 PM, which was a fairly long Planning and Zoning Committee. And that's it, subject to your questions. Get all that?
All right. You had those two posed ordinance and one resolution, is that correct? Michelle?
Yes.
Okay.
I think this gentleman has a question, Doc.
I have one quick question if I could, you know, address you.
If you'll come up and.
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Navy Chris.
My name's Bill Bieber. I'm the one that actually talked about the access in and out, and actually purchasing of the Bollinger, I think is what you call that land on the backside. Last night, I left here fairly confused. I'm an engineer, so I kind of looked at the plans, I went through them. Actually, your plans look very good. They're very well put together. I actually like them, I'm not against the new development, I think it's a great thing for the city. I think that it's a great thing for everyone that lives up there eventually, once it all gets done, it's just hard to accept it first. The only concern that we really had was the traffic. Last night, I stayed up till about 4:00 AM. I started looking at GSA maps, I went through, I used everything from my OnX, everything that I had. I started looking at property lines and everything. I started noticing, looking at the way that the city has conducted their future, or their past plans of building subdivisions. The majority of subdivisions in Waynesville have a single ingress and egress route. And I know that it was a discussion, I think you mentioned it, sir.
It was me.
Yes, and I know you mentioned one, that you said for about 20 years, we've been talking about building another one in. So, I started really looking at it, and there's actually two egress and ingress routes that could be built in the summit. One of them is so astronomical, that I don't think Mr. Rowan is willing to pay 1.2 million dollars to build the original distributive. And the other one is the other route. The only thing that I really wanna ask, it may not be the right forum, but last night I asked that, you know, whenever we approve this, that we're basically setting up the future, so we're looking at summit as a potential. So, currently, the way that we're looking at it is we're doing what we call, as an engineer, you're doing steps. So, we're doing phase one in order to save tax money, as Mr. Nathan said, instead of just doing R1 for everything. We're gonna do it in small pieces. In three years, we'll be standing back in here, and we will probably be talking about the addition to the Pinnacle, Summit, Majestic Road, I think that's the name of it. And I'm sure that we'll add 50 houses. September, we'll be in here talking with Mr. Cox about his side, about adding 50 or whatever houses. So, we're looking at a potential, looking at the map, there's a potential of having almost 500 houses in Summit, with a single ingress and egress route, and that's just the potential of the land. And I understand that you can't just say they're gonna put 500 in, I'm talking potential as an engineer. If I looked at that, there's a potential to build 500 homes. So, the question is to the council, is will there be a plan and provision put in that there has to be another road build on the backside? My recommendation would be to continue Mesa around, where Mesa's gonna end 200 feet anyways, from what I could tell from the GSA maps and OnX. It's gonna end 200 feet from Reverden Road, the gravel road that runs by the farm market over in Waynesville, I think that's what it's called. One time it came up as Pippin Road.
Yeah, the Pippin Road and, we know it.
Okay, yes, sir. Pippin Road, so my recommendation would be just to continue that road out, and when the approval comes through, you do that, and then Mr. Cox, whenever they come in to build, they could use that road to bring her to the end, and they're not using the main exit, which is the same thing that Mr., I apologize.
Rowden.
Mr. Rowden is doing, which is very, you know, we greatly appreciate. But it will also help the city out in the future, because in 12 to 14 years, someone's gonna be in here discussing, we have 380 houses in Summit, and well, we never planned for a road. And then you're gonna hire an engineer, and he's gonna charge 10, $12,000, he's gonna open the maps and be like, the city's gonna have to build a bridge over the Rubidu. And at that point, we're talking, like I said, 1.2 million. But right now, we can write it in as a provision at the early steps, as we're planning for the future of Summit. And it will add another egress and ingress route for the current residents, and also it will cut out the traffic on Sweetburg Road, because currently, right now, today, over 300 single resident homes use Sweetburg Road. And it's kind of torn up already. So, it's future planning for the city, it cuts down on traffic, because I'm starting to see the city's growing, which I love, that's why we moved here. But also, we're starting to see that start of traffic issues in certain areas. And right here, if we do this now, we do it early, we can actually alleviate traffic issues for that subdivision, and we're not in here 10, 12 years after there's 400 homes up in that area. That's all that I wanted to say. I appreciate your time.
You know, I would encourage you to come to Roads and Grounds and kind of discuss that with them too. Get them more aware of your thought process on this, and the development, and what we need to do to make it the best for everybody that lives up there.
Yeah, absolutely, because I started looking at some of the other subdivisions in the area that currently have those. And I think the reason we ended up with the single ingress egress routes, because when we're planning this, we're looking at chunks. So, right now, we're only looking at Pinnacle. But as an engineer, when you lay out your whole, you're laying out all of your subdivision, you typically take the whole thing into account. And right now, we're doing pieces, and that's how we end up with 300 homes with single ingress egress routes to our subdivisions. So, no, I'm more than willing to come in, I'll donate my time, I'll help out anywhere that I can, kind of talk through it. But I do know that tonight, whenever we approve, whatever it is, you guys have basically three options, if that approval's tonight, and I'm familiar how it actually works. But you can approve it, you can deny it, or you can approve it with certain provisions. But my recommendation is, we do it early, we do it now, because once Mr. Cox gets approval, you will never build another ingress egress route into Summit without building a completely another road through someone else's property somewhere else. And I don't know where that would be.
So, tonight, we will vote on rezoning of the Pinnacle side and the plat on the Pinnacle side, the stuff where Cox is, it's gonna be another public hearing.
Yeah, I understand that, but you know, whenever you look at a subdivision, if you just look at one piece, and then you look at another piece, you look at another piece, next thing you know, you have a big mess to build. It happens in some cities, in some cities with some crazy things going on. I don't think it's gonna happen, but we just have to look at it all as a whole piece, a whole problem. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. I got a question from Mr. Doyle. What part of Sweetburg Road was tore up? Do you have any knowledge of that?
Well, it's been patched.
It's a part from. You just asphalt.
No, over 66 up to.
Up to Sweetburg Road.
Sweetburg Road.
Okay, that was genuine.
We paved from Sweetburg Road to the city limits.
But I do think that Sweetburg Road itself is on the capital improvement plan.
It is.
I'm just not sure what date it is, because we widened the bridge on Sweetburg Road, so we could come back and re-asphalt Sweetburg Road once the bridge was fixed. I just don't know what it is on.
Yeah, we've done part of Sweetburg Road asphalt.
That's correct. And whenever they do that, they'll really be glazing down Sweetburg Road.
Yeah, did everything, stuff like that. That part hasn't been done.
Any other comments or questions? We have a proposed ordinance, 2021-38. Reading please.
It's gonna be 39.
39.
38.
38 is discontinued? That's correct. All right. All right, 2021-39. Reading please.
First reading of 2021-39, ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential. For property located west of the intersection of Pinnacle and Mesa in Waynesville, Missouri, fix it and effective date. Second reading, 2021-39, ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential. For property located west of the intersection of Pinnacle and Mesa in Waynesville, Missouri, fix it and effective date.
Open for discussion. Discussion with the council. Call for a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
All set. Amanda, Mr. Rice, roll call please.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have a resolution, 2021-10.
A resolution approving a preliminary plat of phase one of Pinnacle at the summit.
All right, do you have any comments, discussion? I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Wilson.
I'll second.
Mr. Curtis, roll call please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Standing committee reports, utility, Mr. Conley.
Well, we met, the utility committee met on Thursday, 30th of August. We had a full house, all the councilmen were there, had all our cheap work, bottled worst, and bottled worser's cooks there. Does that sound right there? And along with, with, Oka Blue's media and Randy Brown. Meeting was called order at 3:30. at 3:30. We did it all. You good? Uh, thank you. The minutes were approved. Mr. Doyle presented the utility committee with a cost of service study and rate analysis for the city of Waynesville Electric Department. It has included recommendations of proposed rates, summaries of existing and proposed rates, and commercial building comparisons. Mr. Doyle said it's just a tool that we can use for many years. It's not a one-time report to act on and throw, throw it away and something that will last us for several years for controlling finances of our electric system. Next month, uh, 12, people prepared the study, will be present at the utility committee meeting, and we will probably be bringing a rate increase in the following year. We had department updates. Mr. Sheldon said his department had five power outages, three street lights, one tree, 10 miscellaneous, one net beatering, one service upgrade, and four fixed yards from March to July. They had a bad, they had a new cab passenger rack. It didn't turn out to have a factory defect, and the factory had replaced it, and they changed out eight of the red tag holes. And, you know, fixed the pole light, fixed the light at the bridge. Car took it out several months ago. They removed seven dead trees in the park. They said they moved an existing service at 508, Historic 66, back of the building, in front of the building. Didn't need to do a pedestal. The wall was installed for that. They were able to, I'd say, four yards fix. They also replaced one pole that was not red tagged, but turned out to be bad anyway. Mr. York said his department had to rebury a natural gas line that was unearthed by construction, an industrial line, believe 150 feet.
That's correct.
Line that was uncovered, and by a company that did not have a dig right, became within several inches of creating a major disaster. You break a, a natural gas line, a bulldozer, and you got 150 feet of, a lot of gas going in the air. Bulldozers are known to get hot. It can only imagine what the results were. And fortunately, it was corrected by our utility people without any problem. Mr. Eldridge said his department had tin water, replaced one meter, three service lines, repaired four yards. They finished smoke testing. The final data was sent to the engineers. They prepared the water leak splash pad, and they had more work on it in the fall. Cleaned drilling, replaced the well, or the wire in well three, no charge to the city. DNR finished up their inspection at High Point, and we're waiting for the report. Other business, we talked about the open forum for fire protection district and a proposed code of ethics, which we have for tonight. We had, had a need for closed session, went into closed session, came out at 4:41, had no further business. We adjourned at 5:02. Next meeting is on the 7th of September.
Any questions for Mr. Conley?
Yeah, I've got one. Did the company that, uh, digging without a dig right, did they get shut down until they got a dig right, or was it?
Yes.
Do they ever receive a ticket from our police for that?
No.
Do we have an ordinance on the books for that?
Yes.
That'd be very dangerous, especially the gas line. Hadn't been that many years ago that a road grader hit one, and it fried the operator. Not here in the city, but adjacent county, I think it was.
It was.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Moving on. He can run the Development and Governmental Affairs Committee. Mr. Rice.
Yes. Uh, the August 3rd meeting was called to order at 5:00 p.m. We had a full city staff, full committee there. We had a guest, uh, Mr. Raymond Morehouse, who politely waited until we got to the end to make his comments. He had some decent, really good comments. The amendments were approved. Uh, we discussed ordinance designating certain areas in the city, city's park system for the use of food trucks. Uh, the city would like to set up sort of side space at the Riverview Park for mobile food vendors to operate in a safe and efficient manner. Uh, Mr. Doyle presented a draft ordinance and operational guidelines to review by the committee. Uh, the council made a motion, move that forward. The motion passed. Uh, Mr. Doyle also discussed several grants that the city was applying for, uh, which included the T-Mobile grant, which is due September 30th. Uh, mentioned the Volkswagen Trust Grant, which is due October 12th, and the ARP funding, which is moving forward with paperwork, and the paperwork process, which is due September 1st. Uh, Mr. Doyle also discussed the intent of the Economic Development Incident Program, and feels that this is a step the city needs to take to help develop within the city. Program would provide various development options to new and veteran businesses within the city of Waynesville. I think a lot of people don't know much about that. Could be a really good thing. Uh, the business spotlight for August was Swenson's Auto Service, which, well, Swenson's here tonight. Uh, special events, which happened August 7th, was a duck race. And other business, uh, open forum for fire protection services, a special council meeting, which happened on August 6th. Mr. Doyle provided the committee with an ordinance establishing a comprehensive code of ethics for officers and employees, uh, like Councilman Conley mentioned, repealing conflicting ordinances. There was a need for closed session. Committee entered closed session at 5:58, returned from closed session at 6:21, had no further business. The meeting adjourned at 6:21. The next meeting is scheduled to be held on September 7th at 5:00 p.m.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
With duck or what?
Never heard.
All right. Thank you.
Does anyone know?
I want to cross the line, Kirk.
Okay.
Police and Emergency Management Committee, Councilman Wilson. Oh, wait a minute. We have an ordinance. Proposed ordinance 2021-36. Reading, please.
An ordinance to establish procedures for disclosure of conflicts of interest to comply with Senate Bill 262, fixing an effective date. Second reading, ordinance to establish procedures for disclosure of conflicts of interest to comply with Senate Bill 262, fixing an effective date.
Any discussions from the council?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Police and Emergency Management Committee, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Um, the meeting was conducted on August 12th at 3:30. Um, it was called to order. We had no citizens' comments. Um, wasn't a lot of stuff going on in that meeting. One of the things was the code of ethic ordinance, which we have already heard of about twice right now. Um, we also, um, I started off the meeting kind of talking about the broken window theory, um, with, uh, Chief Cordova, and just kind of how it integrates into how we should, um, really focus on, um, managing the meeting itself. So I kind of just talked about the, um, the order, how I was going to conduct the meetings, how we should be respectful of one another in our meetings as far as communication is concerned, so everyone can be heard. Um, also, um, grant updates. Chief Cordova discussed a $1,200 grant, um, that, a mini grant for DWI enforcement, and that was going to take place from the 20th of August to September 6th. Um, also, Chief Cordova gave us an update on officers Goldsmith and Chapman, who have been working together and doing really well. This is, um, in relation to our new hire of a official for that, that capacity. And then also, um, we had a need for a closed session, um, at 3:48 p.m. We came out at 4:15. Um, and the next official committee meeting is September 9th at 3:30. But after that meeting, we had a special session, which was on the 16th of August, and we covered the topic of the promotion policy for the police department, um, which was a product of our closed session discussion. So we brought this forward, um, which will be presented tonight, and it really is just about organizing and, um, um, validating our policies and relooking at them to update them so that they can be implemented. Um, the, the meeting took place at 12. It ended at 12:20. And again, the next meeting will be September 9th at 3:30, right here. So any questions?
Any questions? We do have a proposed ordinance. Reading, please.
First reading, 2021-34, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville's Employee Personnel Manual regarding promotion of police department personnel, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending the city of Waynesville's Employee Personnel Manual regarding promotion of police department personnel, fixing an effective date.
Any discussion from the council? Can I have a, uh... Mr. Corrin?
I second.
Mr. Wilson, roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rhodes and Grounds. Councilman Farnum.
Okay. Rhodes and Grounds, and then on August 5th at 5:00 p.m. Uh, first out of the gate, uh, there was no citizens' comments. We had a couple of citizens show up, but they just wanted to listen. Uh, our meetings and amendments from the previous month were approved. We discussed the Volkswagen Trust Grant again, and the grant is due October 12th, and the plan is to apply for it, and hopefully we'll get lucky and get some money to buy us more equipment. We also discussed, discussed the code of ethics that's been mentioned here a couple of times. And then we had our street department updates. The drainage issues that we talked about the previous month on Blue Lane, uh, have been addressed, and the resident there gave very positive reports. So that's, that's good for him and the guys that did the work. Appreciate that. Uh, they said that they've been working on Tribbian Road for the, uh, industrial park area, get it ready for paving for this fall, and, uh, basically, we're just waiting for the, uh, company that does the asphalt lane to get to us. They removed trees in the park and cleaned up the roadway between Sunset and Mercy Road. Uh, we also discussed the, uh, business of the August 6th open public forum. Uh, we had a need for a closed session, so we entered in closed session at 5:28, discussed our business. We came back and opened session at 6:03, and we adjourned at 6:03. Next scheduled meeting is September 2nd at 5:00 p.m., and we would enjoy any citizen that would like to come to the staff for a discussion.
Any questions for Mr. Farnum? We have a proposed ordinance, 2021-31. Reading, please.
An ordinance designating certain areas in the city's park system for the use of food trucks, establishing rules and regulations, establishing rental rates, fixing an effective date. An ordinance designating certain areas in the city's park system for the use of food trucks, establishing rules and regulations, establishing rental rates, fixing an effective date.
Discussion? Any discussion? Make some motion? Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Rice, roll call.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Finance and Human Resources Committee, Councilman Conley.
We met on August 2nd. We were earlier. We met on August 2nd. Uh, myself, Councilman Corrin were there. Councilman Davis was playing AWOL somewhere.
Hey, do you have a heart attack and you got to go back before you let me know?
The city staff and, of course, Darrell Marant are present. Meeting was called to order. We had no citizens' comments. Amendments were approved as written. We approved paying the bills, uh, with our cash flow reports and year-to-date budget where. The city has completed 58.3% of the fiscal year, with expenses tracking at 58%, and revenues tracking at 59%, which is very good. We reviewed the ordinance, creating an economic development coordinated position that was passed to the council, council meeting on the 6th, and it was approved. We talked about the American Rescue Plan, code of ethics. We had a short closed session. Uh, we talked about the town hall meeting, public hearing for the tax rate, and we adjourned at 5:40. The next meeting is September 9th at 5:00 p.m.
Questions, Mr. Conley? We have a proposed ordinance, 2021-35.
First reading, an ordinance fixing the abnormal tax, uh, abnormal property tax rates for the city of Waynesville for the year 2021 on all taxable property within said city. Second reading, ordinance fixing the abnormal property tax rates for the city of Waynesville for the year 2021 on all taxable property within said city.
Any discussion? Have a motion? Amanda?
I'll second.
Mr. Wilson, roll call, please.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board. Mr. Liberty.
There was no meeting, but we will discuss the proposed ordinance, House Bill 2021-37, approving an amendment to the airport aid agreement between the city and the city of St. Roberts and Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission. Mr. Doyle, would you mind briefing on that?
This is kind of reaffirming, uh, the original agreement, and it's, gives you a project number, but it's basically the, uh, what they call a TAMP, the Terminal Area Master Plan, uh, which you've heard that several times, and I know you have too, Clarence. We've, we've really discussed that with the new engineers, um, as well as, uh, airport layout plan. So we got on the, uh, master plan of Fort Leonard Wood and their development, five-year long-term plan, which is a, um, uh, really a big deal. We've been working to get there for a long time. It's the first time we've been able to, uh, merge our plan in with theirs. So, so that, that's been a success. And it just kind of, uh, updates that agreement between the cities and, um, and, uh, Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
All right. Proposed ordinance?
First reading of 2021-37, an ordinance amending ordinance number 23A, authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute a supplemental agreement for the air, for airport aid between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance number 23A, authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute a supplemental agreement for airport aid between the city of Waynesville, the city of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, fixing an effective date.
Any discussion?
No.
Motion. Motion, Mr. Liberty, second by Mr. Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other business, Mr. Doyle?
Yeah, there is one thing. Uh, Jack Eldridge was able to come in. I would like to have a picture, Doc, if you don't mind with, uh, that, that nine.
Want to read it again?
Uh, no, you don't. Uh, I was going to mention it in my, uh, city administrators' report, but I thought since he was here, I would like to move it forward, and, and you guys to get your picture, if you, if you don't mind.
mind.
You're welcome. I thought we were sending home.
Did we try to squeeze the whole city council down here?
No.
Come on. You drink the water here.
Don't be the second row.
We'll be in the back row. Yeah, we're in the back row.
There's enough heavy bodies on this city council, we're not squeezing nowhere.
Yeah, we're zero every month.
Well, thank you for that. I didn't say I wasn't one. Thank you, Jack, you guys do it. You did a great job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You get a free cup of coffee in city hall for that.
And a bottle of water on display.
There you go.
Any other business, Sean?
No.
How about city administrator report?
Sure. Going to start something that's not been touched on yet, well, you'll see a lot of next month, it's going to, it's going to really, it's coming fast, is the 2022 Department Budget Meetings. We will be holding those here at city hall, but it will be in your finance committees. You're going to start hearing about the budget a lot in the next few months, as we move forward to a draft budget and hopefully then a final budget. Economic Development Coordinator's already kind of been, discussed utility rate studies, pretty excited about this, it's been discussed in the utility report. We have kind of hit a final draft of electric rate. We are beginning a preliminary draft of the sewer rate, and we will be working through water and natural gas in the coming months. Fire Protection Services Public Forum went very well, it was well attended. We did have one resident from St. Robert, we had a resident from Waynesville that spoke at the meeting, and we had several fire department and residents from the county who gave us some good input from that. I did have in my notes, I was going to mention what Doc Brown just presented Jack with, that is, Jack gets to take the award and a lot of the credit for their job, but that entire department is dedicated, and there's not a day goes by that they don't strive to do better, and strive to do better. And that's how you achieve excellence, so very glad Doc recognized them.
Go with the comments.
That's it.
Council comments. Amanda?
Where is the time going? Anybody else feel like it's just flying?
No, I don't.
Oh, getting old.
The summer's coming to an end, school starts on Monday, so please be mindful as you're driving around, and school buses will be running, and little children will be running too, so. And thank you, everybody at the city, for everything that you do. Special kudos to Jack today.
Ted?
Yeah, I'd kind of forgot that it was wastewater, man, week or month, you got a proclamation from the governor, representative, and you do do a good job. I kid with you a lot, but they do a great work. I had an interesting conversation, which had nothing to do with this particular meeting, Mr. Valetti may be interested in it. And it came up in a general conversation about other things, but a remark was made that our main park, our Riverview Park, was a jewel. This person said to me that several times a week, he and his wife make a point of either driving through or walking through the park, because it is a jewel. And doubted that many cities our size could make claim to that. Our workers do a great job of maintaining it. That's all I got.
Mr. Liberty.
I'll start off with, thank you for those that came to that meeting that we had on fire protection. Thank you to each one of you, it's it, tonight's meeting. We'd like to see more people come. And thank you to Mr. Doyle, his staff, and the city employees for a good job you're doing.
Mr. Rice.
Yes, I'm excited about the economic development in Waynesville. It's good to see engineers, builders here, everybody, bankers here, everything. I think we're headed in the right direction, I think there's a lot more to come, I think, kind of excited about the help that's within, that we can get for the economic development for people who are already here, businesses already here, and that's it.
Much glad you were on the council.
Yes, yes, very good, thank you.
Mr. Curtis.
I want to jump on the Jack bandwagon tonight. We had a water leak in my neighborhood, and I've never had so many phone calls so quick. And of course, water always happens, breaks in the evenings, it never picks the middle of the day. But those guys got up there, I don't know who it was, but they got up there and fixed that, and then we had a patch that needed to be fixed, and that was fixed in a fast, efficient way. Also, I want to brag on Ms. Bonnie Wilson, if you don't know Ms. Bonnie Wilson, she serves on the park board. That lady is a firecracker, I don't know how to say this politically correct, she's a seasoned woman. She brings something to the park board that we need in our city, and that's excitement. People need to get excited of where they live, and they need to serve like Bonnie serves on the park board. And our park is the jewel of our city. If you don't go down to the park, you need to do that. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Okay, I'm going to kind of take the same direction as Councilman Curtis. I always appreciate what the city workers do, but I want to kind of focus on who we work for, the citizens. And we lost a longtime resident this last month, lived to be 100 years old, Ms. Wilma Tucker. Also, I want to point out two other things, was, I get a lot of contact with people in social media, so they send me messages, and then I go out and I try to talk to them, but I want to just recognize a couple of people over the last couple of weeks. One of them was a Ms. Kizzy Robinson. Kizzy Robinson lives in the Woodland Hills area, and one morning she was on her way to work, and it was two dogs that were loose, one was killed, and someone drove off, left it on the side, but those dogs were family, so the other one was sitting there whining. She found out who the owner was, got that dog back to the owner and their family. And, you know, for some people, they like, their dog is a part of their family, so they was missing, she got them back to them, they all, and they developed another relationship. The other one was Ms. Katie Knight, I talk to her a lot, so we talk a lot about, you know, I go through the neighborhood, I'm driving through the neighborhood, and she was like, I'm just going to go and weed eat. I said, all right, I'll be over there. So when I went out, she was weed eating the area because she says she wants people to rent the properties in our area, and she didn't want that to be an eyesore. So those type of citizens, I think is what you was talking about, that take the pride in our community, is why I serve. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Well said. Mr. Davis.
That's horrible, Bob. But, I'm going to say this, when you're talking about people being proud of their community, the people of my ward and my neighborhood showed up in force last night, worried about what was going to happen to their part of the community, and I have to commend them for that. They came out, public hearing, it was their forum, and they talked about the stuff. They got from the horse's mouth what was going to happen in one section of it. With that, one of the citizens showed up and pointed out a section of the municipal code that I had misread somewhat, because if I had read it correctly, we probably wouldn't have had the second public hearing last night. So I commend those citizens for that. One of the citizens of my neighborhood come up tonight and said, hey, this is what we should do, I'll provide you my services and everything else. We need citizens like that, amen. We don't only need citizens like that at meetings, but we need them sitting on the other side of the desk, too. I ended up sitting here because it was a planning issue way back in the day, I wanted to build a third garage onto my house, and some of the people in the city treated me like I was garbage. So I went to the mayor and said, I want to be on that planning and zoning committee. And then I was the chairman of it, and I'll jet some millionaire and I'm sitting here. But citizens, there are slots on the planning and zoning, and I mean, they came last night, not everybody shows up for that, because things get tiring. You know, you get worn down over the time. Mr. Mann was there last night, he's a previous this side of the table guy, he did his time, but he was still there. So when I say I'm proud of citizens, they stepped up last night, they stepped up today, everybody, and hey, I probably won't do this forever, the city tells me I'm doing it forever, but, you know, someday I might have to move further down the summit if we get that straight. Or over by his house, one or the other, because I need a smaller house.
Mr. Farne.
I'm going to change tune here. Next month, it's hard to believe, it's going to be 20 years since the Twin Towers and Shanksville and Benetton got hit. Where has time gone? But it's a day that everybody pretty much, if you ask them, they know where they were that day, they can tell you what they were doing. It's the same as when President Kennedy got killed. People of that age group, like myself, we know where we were at that day. And I just want to remind everybody to take some time, think about how lucky we are, and maybe say a prayer for family and friends that were affected, and hope that it never happened again.
Thank you. Well, I do want to make a comment, everybody, we've had a number of comments about our park being one of the jewels in the county. I would encourage all citizens that have the time, go down there and walk those trails, enjoy what we have down there, and as the weather starts getting a little bit cooler, it's a great time to enjoy it, whether it be in the morning or in the early afternoon. Speaking of volunteers, actually, these folks here were voted in, but technically, they volunteered, they didn't have to go down and fill out an application to run for council. I encourage any of the citizens out there that would like to serve on any more committees or at some future time, set up here, please, join us. Close.
We do it for all the money.